We ready? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 19th, 2020, meeting of the Village Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board. Could I roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Garrity. Nordentoff.
Here.
Path.
Here.
Haystack.
Here.
Riley. Sula.
Present. We do have a quorum. These new speakers are weird. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda this evening is a comprehensive use plan update.
A presentation of the village's draft comprehensive land use plan update will be provided by the village's consultant, Camero's LTD. The updated plan establishes a revised set of goals, objectives, and policies to guide growth and investment and achieve Gurnee's long-term vision for its future. The next step after this review is a public hearing prior to the document being forwarded to the village board for adoption.
Okay, thank you. Can I turn the floor over to Esther?
Hello. I'm gonna be sitting behind Mission Control. I moved this weekend and hurt my back, so need to kind of keep sitting. But I am very happy to be here tonight and take you through this, the first public draft of the comprehensive plan. Again, as it stated pretty much on every page of it, that this is a draft, so we're looking for input on revisions that need to be made, things that need to be added. You know, oftentimes, it's a lot of information to take in all at once tonight, so the idea of, you know, maybe coming back with comments a couple days later is great. We would ask that you forward those to the village staff, and we'll get them to us, and we'll start making revisions to that public hearing draft. So, to kind of go over the big picture items that are within there, because again, a lot of details contained within the comprehensive plan, I really just wanted to outline the kind of goals, objectives, and policies that make up the heart of this revised comprehensive plan. Just as a refresher, comprehensive plans are a community's vision for the future. It's really looking at typically a 20-year planning horizon, which is what we're looking at here in Compass 2040. We've organized this around five key areas: land use, community character areas, economic development, the environment and open space, as well as mobility. So I'm not going to read the whole paragraph to you, but as you are familiar, most comprehensive plans contain a vision that kind of encompasses everything that we're seeking to accomplish moving forward through land use policies and future development. And as you see here, we've outlined some of the kind of key words that are part of this vision, and it's the idea of Gurnee being a fun destination, a good place to raise your family, a good place to have your business, being kind of very well-rounded in that regard. Knowing the quality of housing stock here, seeking to preserve that, as well as diversify where that's appropriate, and really accommodating workers to live within that housing of every skill level. We want to continue to provide the excellent public services of the village, as well as a diverse workforce. As always, reducing congestion and looking at multimodal aspects, these ideas of active transportation options, preserving the open spaces and enhancing them, and in cases, connecting them where that's possible, so people can work through the greenways of the village, and making sure that Gurnee remains a place where people choose to live and work and continue to invest within the community. So this is really kind of the big outline, the big picture that this comprehensive plan is attempting to accomplish. We done, as you can see in the beginning of the plan, there's a whole series of background information that's provided. It goes through history, Gurnee's place within the region, the population profile, including various demographic statistics, looking at the existing housing stock and the diversity of that contained within there, looking at the various aspects of the economy, both commercial, tourism, based upon these big regional attractions that are present here, as well as industry, employment statistics, transportation, and again, this looks at everything from the roadways that get people around in cars to truck routes that are part of these bigger employment centers, as well as transit, parks and open space, the village government, as well as education. So you'll see in the first part of this comprehensive plan that we outline kind of where the village is today. It's based off the existing conditions report that was done previously, as well as additional research we did to kind of flesh that out fully, to provide people a background of what's going on here in Gurnee. So the first category, and what is usually the main heart of a comprehensive plan, and as is the case here, is land use. And what is the current land use patterns? What are the future land use patterns proposed to be? And really, it's what we've tried to do here is look at making sure that we're balancing the different aspects of land use: residential, commercial, industrial, public, and open space. Making sure that it provides consumer choice, diversifies the economy, continues to be a place that people want to call home, and at the same time, doing this in a way that's environmentally responsible and sustainable. So the first thing that you'll see within the plan is looking at what is the existing land use. And these are the categories that this is divided into. You see the four categories of residential, really with multifamily being the highest density that's available, commercial and business, office and service, industrial and office research, as well as public and quasi-public. So, as you can see within the plan, there is an existing land use map. It maps out a lot. That giant swath of blue is really all these quasi-public spaces that are going on, including parks and utility. You see again, a significant amount of residential and these large commercial swaths that are really these regional attractions that are located here, as well as the businesses that support them, surrounding them. And then the purple taking up the industrial category. As we look to move into the future land use, we got a little bit more specific, and so you can see, and there's a table within the plan that talks about how these land use categories relate to each other. So we really looked at low density being the less than three dwelling units per acre, medium density being three to eight dwelling units per acre, so it's really kind of focusing on single-family, two-family, and then combining high-density and multifamily into the high-density residential, so this is more than eight units per acre. For commercial, we got a little bit more specific and really divided commercial into commercial areas, as well as entertainment. Office, you can see a couple of these very specific ones in place here, obviously, actual office areas, office parks that you have, but also service areas like the East Grand Corridor, as well as the Village Center area that is within there as well. Industrial has a new category in addition to just straight industrial, looking at those areas of industrial use that are transitioning into a more mixed type of category. So those industrial uses have maybe some commercial that's encroaching within them, and really creating this mix of different types of uses, so really kind of flagging those areas to be a little bit more flexible in the application of, say, zoning districts or how they develop in the future. And then dividing out these public, quasi-public areas into the public, semi-public, things like Village Hall, parks and open space, as well as utility and railroad, because those are significant here within the village. And you can see that within the map. As you can see, when we look at future land use, things have gotten a little, there's a little bit more gradation. You can see that, again, it's still, there's a lot of single-family. There's a lot of parks and open space. Again, the commercial takes over. You can see that in those areas, those large red swaths in particular to the northwest. You can see that area along Grand Avenue. Entertainment, looking, focusing really on those areas around, say, Six Flags. And then you can see where you've got industrial is the light purple, and then those areas that may be transitioning from a purely industrial character to more of that industrial mixed use, in that kind of hot pink color that's present there. And finally, because of their unique character, you can see we've created separate categories for the East Grand Corridor, where the ULI study was done, as well as the existing Village Center, which kind of correlates to the zoning for the Village Center, the C4 that you have in place now. So a lot of the land use changes that you'll see between existing to future are really us just kind of bringing things together and kind of right-sizing all the different land uses, so that things kind of are more in line with each other in the existing development patterns. In particular, for residential, we really did want to make sure that we're reflecting the current neighborhood development patterns. You'll see some higher-density areas brought in, as we talked about, kind of that diversity of housing stock, Washington near the tri-state, as well as within the village's ETJ areas, particularly to the northeast and the southwest. For commercial, again, really narrowing in on the Village Center and East Grand, giving them their own categories, as well as adjustments to the different types of commercials. So you see that division between entertainment and commercial made those distinctions there as well. And then, as I spoke about, the new industrial mixed-use category in particular, you can see that in the tri-state Parkway area. And so this is really kind of looking at areas of change. I know it's kind of difficult to see on this map on the screen, but you'll see areas highlighted, the kind of all the little black dots, the chicken packs over there on the eastern side. Those highlight areas that have changed from what they're labeled as existing to what they are now in the future land use category. So it's kind of helpful to see where areas may have changed. And you'll see the land use categories, the colors correspond to the future land use map. And again, kind of looking at, as we talked about, one of those areas was the idea of bringing in, you know, looking at industrial, looking at office, and looking at this industrial mixed-use category, some of the opportunity areas. Again, this map is within the document itself, kind of highlighting those. You see those, the tri-state industrial district, the northeast industrial district, as well as the slightly smaller, but nonetheless important, the Washington office and industrial district areas. And we kind of talk about these within the plan and how they bring a valuable part of the economy here to Gurnee, as well as, you know, things like Gurnee Mills and Great Wolf Lodge and Six Flags. These are equally important as well. So, really going through the objectives and kind of the goals and objectives and policies that we want to do, we're just going to highlight these in each of the categories. And so, as we talked about early on in this presentation, it is the idea of maintaining a balance of land uses. So it's the idea of supporting a diversity of housing types. One of the things we also explored and talked a little bit about within the plan was the idea of senior housing, and is perhaps Gurnee becoming too much a repository for the area's senior housing, because the numbers seem a little bit out of whack for the village compared to the kind of larger region. And while it's not the role of the comprehensive plan to do that study, that perhaps a housing study would be appropriate at a later date to make sure that, you know, that number doesn't get too skewed. Again, things like supporting the existing commercial base, including the bigger businesses and the smaller businesses that you have, and supporting local and unique businesses. In particular, if you look at the ULI plan, it really does talk a lot about that, that it can be an area for local entrepreneurship. Again, continuing to attract new industrial and office, and then continuing to grow those areas where you've got the existing services and facilities in place. We also want to make sure that as part of land use, it's not just kind of what's going on on the parcel of land, but kind of how the overall image of the village takes place, and we want to make sure that there's a very positive image of Gurnee. So, again, things like looking at gateway features and ways that perhaps that can start to tie the relationship between east and west that's bisected by 94, looking to develop those vacant, underutilized parcels, a lot of them in that East Grand Gateway area. Again, and then just very simple things that can always help improve the appearance anywhere you go, is things like improving the streetscape, burying the utilities when that's feasible, understanding that that is actually very expensive, and maintaining and enhancing the urban tree canopy. And as you can see here, these, this map is also within the plan. This highlights some of the key gateway areas that we identified, which may be ripe for something, say, a wayfinding or signage program, that really creates not necessarily the same image in each of these four areas, but something that's tied together that really lets you know that you've, kind of you're in the village. So we, as we know that it's made up of a range of these different commercial, office, industrial, and residential districts, there are a couple areas that we wanted to focus on in a little bit more detail. The first two is the Village Center and the East Grand Gateway, as I spoke about. But then we looked at two existing opportunity sites, which we came to you before, kind of earlier on, and talked about, and we've kind of fleshed out based on the feedback that we received during those meetings. So the first is the Village Center, and kind of looking at it, and looking at the, kind of just the basic kind of bones within there, the idea there was to continue to reinforce the existing character, that very low-scale residential professional in particular, that's more to the west, and then the residential character that's very stable to the east, and just allowing that mix to kind of continue as it is. There's a number of difficulties. Conversions of residential buildings to commercial can be more difficult just because of building code. The lots really stretch through. They're through lots, so access and parking can be difficult. So really, the idea is it's, it has a character that people do like now, and just to continue to reinforce that through the zoning, which is really, does speak to that. In 2016, there was the Urban Land Institute study, revitalization strategies for East Grand Avenue. As you look through the comprehensive plan, we've summarized some of their main points. Obviously, that report is in significantly more detail, but it really does talk about creating a kind of mixed-use area that's got a more maker feel to it, based on some of the businesses that are there already. And so really, the comprehensive plan just enforces the strategies that were put forth for East Grand Avenue. And then we looked at two kind of larger areas of potential development, and kind of what could potentially happen there. The first is Oak Plain and Belvedere, and the second was the area Milwaukee and Washington. So, Oak Plain and Belvedere, I'm very familiar with, because I get off the expressway every single time I come here, so I'm aware of that parcel of land quite well. And what we looked at there was creating something that both has some, has residential elements, in particular, as you can see, to the north, that's about 45 single-family attached or townhouse-type dwellings up there that abut the other residential subdivision, so providing a buffer. And then kind of mixing down as you go further south into multifamily and mixed-use development. And we will clarify that the mix should mean mixed-use within there, not industrial mixed-use. And then with the frontage along the tollway there, that we can look at, you know, creating more commercial, maybe potentially, commercial and office space, and looking at the potential connections and ways to get there. And we understand that this is kind of a big idea, but we wanted to lay out a potential option for how something like this could evolve in the future, in kind of a larger-scale development. The other one we looked at was closer to Six Flags, Milwaukee and Washington, and really kind of looking at, how do we develop this area that's a little bit tricky, because it's divided into three parts? And so I'm going to go kind of quickly through each of the three parts as we envision this. The first was this kind of entertainment core. It was really looking at creating a sort of plaza environment as you come in, allowing for commercial development, potentially some mixed-use, potentially a hotel. It's got enough area in there that I think by our account, that when we looked at it, you could have about 100,000 square feet of an entertainment space, something like a bowling alley, Dave and Buster's, skydiving places, you know, really anything you can think of, but really creating this kind of entertainment-sports complex, potentially in this area and that kind of central piece. The next was a more industrial flex. As you can see, it's that IMU designation that I spoke about earlier during land use. And really, what it shows is that kind of these buildings, it's really, it's a flexible layout. What we wanted to do was preserve some of the natural areas around there, even contemplating that people who worked in this area could potentially use that as walking trails during lunchtime, so really kind of maintaining that and understanding that there's some water issues that take place on this part of the parcel. And then probably the last area, which is probably the most kind of almost obvious, is the idea of continuing, I think that's Woodlake Drive, is that? Okay. So continuing that residential development that's there, kind of just following that pattern of, just basically extending that pattern of multifamily development that's already in place and kind of filling it out that way. So in terms of economic development, you know, some of these things, these issues we've touched on earlier, it's again, the idea of, you know, your businesses support your residents, and they fund public services, and we want to continue that. You're very unique within the state in regards to this. So we want to make sure that we support existing businesses, as well as attract new development and new types of businesses to the village, to continue to maintain that base in its healthy and stable state. One of which is, we do know that a lot of the largest employers that you have going on here are within the kind of retail service sector, but office and industrial are equally important. So we want to make sure that we continue to kind of grow and redevelop areas of office and industrial development, making sure you've got the advantage of 94 and 41, making sure that those areas are taken advantage of for this type of development. Where you have, as we talked about, the industrial and office, protecting them from encroachment. So things like the industrial mixed use is a very kind of carefully curated set of uses that are compatible with each other. But you don't want to start allowing things like multifamily to start sneaking in there. And so it's the idea of really kind of protecting these areas. And then continuing, and I know the village has numerous programs in place with this, to continue to market any vacant properties to others to make sure that, you know, that these areas can be redeveloped, and you're bringing in new businesses. Again, kind of piggybacking on that, actively marketing these vacant properties. Again, we know a lot of work goes on here, in particular with economic development here in the village, so really just continuing to support those efforts, you know, advertising these larger sites potentially to regional and national real estate publications, as well as, you know, even going on a more individual, site-by-site basis, and talking to the property owners, and seeing how you can help them market those areas for that type of development. And then one of the key things is, is as you kind of look at these areas of industrial, you've got the truck routes in place. And we know this is kind of a complicated spaghetti bowl of there being IDOT and Lake County and things that the village has designated, and working together to kind of coordinate all of those. But, you know, kind of looking at how trucks get in and out, and how truck service is changing, to make sure that we can continue to, to make sure that we've got the right truck routes in place and that things are designated and working properly. So it's the idea of where do we put new ones? How do we make sure everything stays properly maintained? Where are intersections that may be difficult, identifying gaps, and again, kind of working with the other jurisdictions, Lake County, IDOT, really to get this kind of all coordinated and moving forward. And again, the less reliance on retail, though we do know retail is very important. We don't want to give the impression that we're trying to get rid of retail. We're just trying to kind of bolster this other part of economic development, so looking at ways to spur the industrial and office development, and understanding that maybe over time, there's ways that we can start to connect these areas to public transit, so that there's easier ways to get there. So perhaps those who do live and work in Gurnee at these facilities could have additional ways to get to work, other than just by car. And then finally, kind of the regional attractions, and you know, obviously, these are incredibly important. So it's the idea of, you know, making sure that, in particular, in the zoning, things like Gurnee Mills can adapt to the changing nature of retail, really continuing to support marketing Gurnee Mills and making sure that, you know, you've got a lot going on there, in addition to just retail, that service is taking place in there as well. Supporting your regional attractions, Six Flags, Great Wolf Lodge, as well as, as we talked about, that area Milwaukee and Washington, where you've got that sports-entertainment complex, perhaps pursuing something like that in order to continue to prop up this sector of the economy here within the village. Open space, I think one of the things that every comprehensive plan says, and it's very important that they all say it, is continue to promote and protect the open space. No one's saying get ever, no one's ever said to get rid of it. And we really want to make sure that we support this network of green space that's present here, in particular, along the Disciplines River, and make these connections that are necessary in order to keep it healthy and striving. So many of that is really just continuing to maintain and enhance the park and its existing and recreation areas. So making sure that we look at protecting these resources from inappropriate encroachment, preserving the open space around the Disciplines River. A lot of this would be working with the Park District to create these greenways, in particular, kind of looking at areas prone to flooding. How can they be incorporated into an open-space network? We talked a little bit about in the plan how there can be standards for development that protect natural resources. So say someone's coming in for a PUD, there's natural areas on that land. How can those be protected within the PUD process? And then looking at ways to make connections, because it's as important as it is to reserve area for open space, you want to make sure that people can get to it, and that people can travel to and from each of those areas. So really tying those together and making sure we're looking at networks that connect the ways people can connect to these parks. Again, as I, as I just mentioned, there are some impacts that come from flooding. So really continuing to delineate the wetlands and the floodplains, so requiring designation within development plans, so things like the PUD. We mentioned within the plan that perhaps looking at these, as these are delineated, that this becomes something that becomes part of the PUD development pattern. Continuing to manage stormwater management. We know there's the Lake County Stormwater Management Ordinance in place, and continuing to work with that. And again, any of those land areas that are repetitive losses, perhaps those can be integrated into the park system, and we speak a little bit about that within the plan. And then finally, mobility. Really, how do we get people around the village? And it's really focusing more than just on cars, but things like pedestrian ways, bicycle ways, and even transit. How can we enhance transit? So the plan speaks to a number of goals, objectives, and policies that talk about getting people and goods safely, efficiently, and comfortably all around the village. So one of them is, you know, the idea of adopting, just from a policy perspective, a complete streets policy. And what you can see within the plan is we outline kind of how you go about doing that. It's kind of an ordinance that gets adopted separately, and really looking at making sure that that kind of talks about where these complete streets should be going, and create some guidelines for that. There are ways that we want to continue to make, you know, land for sidewalks and bicycle paths, make sure that there's safe ways to cross the street, including those in roadway improvements. We know you've got a lot of issues here, because a lot of the streets aren't necessarily yours, but it's the idea of you've had some successes working with, say, IDOT, to get that incorporated into any kind of reconstruction. And so continuing to pursue that and make sure that that becomes kind of part of the way negotiations go. And even things like installing bus shelters and pedestrian amenities, so that transit starts to become incorporated into mobility considerations as well. Again, as I talked about, the idea of connections is very important, and it ties kind of back to the open space and the greenways that are in place as well. The pedestrian and bicycle trail master plan really speaks to this in more detail. It kind of talks about how this, how this should work. You're looking at these larger regional trails that continuing to connect to those. And then focusing bicycle and pedestrian efforts on these key streets that have been listed here: Grand, Washington, Almond, Milwaukee, Hunt Club Road, Dilly's Road, Gauges Lake Road, how we focus pedestrian and bike improvements onto those areas. And then finally, improving public transit. We know that this is a kind of bigger issue. Transportation planners live for this kind of stuff, and it's the idea of coordinating with pace. How do we kind of fill in the gaps in the bus service? We know that there's some issues with metro. You're either going, I think, to Waukegan or to Grays Lake, and then busing it into the village, you know, kind of looking at the Metro and Amtrak options that are in place. And really just continuing to explore opportunities as they arise, as to how to kind of bring people into Gurnee, or how people can leave Gurnee, go to their work in other places. As you can see in the demographics, many people who live here actually don't work within the village, and really looking to improve those transit options that are available to all. And with that, I know that was a lot, but it's a big overview. There's more detail within the plan, and we'd be, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just comment that I think the document does a really great job of kind of giving us the history, how we've evolved over the last several decades, and, you know, bridging us to where we want to go. I, I found it to be very well put together. One of my favorite exhibits is Figure Six, where you put the dotted lines around what's changed. I'm colorblind, and so sometimes it's hard for me to...
If you remember Chris, Chris is also colorblind. My associate at the firm who did all the maps, and he is colorblind as well.
That was very, very helpful for me. One question. I noticed it when I read through the document, and you briefly touched on it, concern about a propensity for our population to be older than the rest of Lake County. And from, from my perspective, we don't have a lot of senior housing, aside from the assisted living and the memory care centers. When I think of, like, senior living things, I think of more like age-in-place complexes, where you buy into a condominium or whatever at one stage in your life, and as you get older and your needs change, you move into different parts of the development. And I, we don't really have that. So where's the concern coming from in terms of the aging of our, of our village in particular?
I, I think the concern is coming more so from the kind of, more so the assisted living facilities and the nursing home facilities coming in, and I don't know if we made that clear enough in here. I don't know if I'm getting exactly at your point. The concern was that, I don't think it's to stop people from... I think it's desirable to, I don't think that our message was that it's not desirable to age in place in the village, but just that not everything should be taken over with just kind of assisted senior living facilities.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I, I, for one, like the concept of a broader community that has those facilities as being kind of a small part of a bigger picture, and we don't, we don't have that. From my perspective, our population is aging because people are just staying in their homes. And, I mean, I look at, in my particular subdivision, I've been there 30 years, and I'll bet half of us are original owners. And that's, that's pretty remarkable in many ways. But I don't see that we have, and I don't know if the economics would support it, but I don't see that we have that transitional... but I, I don't see that we have that transitional complex, if you will. That, that's my only comment. Anybody else have any thoughts?
You're talking about like Friendship Village, or there's one in Lindenhurst, too, I think.
Yeah, the, the one that I know is in, in the south suburbs. It's in Orland Park. It's called Smith's, Smith's Crossing, but I, I think there's.
Could I get the name of that, just so I can look up specifically what you were talking about?
Smith's Crossing, or it's either Smith or Smith's Crossing. It's in Orland Park.
In Villa Park?
Orland Park.
Orland Park, okay.
Friendship Village does the same thing. They're down in Schaumburg. And they go all the way from apartment living to full-on assisted nursing care.
And, and some of them are like condos that you buy into as opposed to, to rent.
Right.
We'll look into those. Thank you.
Okay.
You were talking to me, I've heard this before about bike paths on Grand Avenue. Has there been any, or pedestrian and bike path, has there been any talk about a bridge over the tollway?
I have to turn to the village.
Do you want the microphone, Dave?
I mean, we have Stern School Road, but it's like way out of the way of Grand Avenue.
So we've looked at that several different times. With the full cloverleaf at Grand Avenue, pedestrian travel along there is difficult.
Yeah.
Any kind of a bridge structure over, you know, if you're looking at significant distances and with that comes significant expenses.
Right.
By the time you wait until you get either the, the ramps tight enough to the tollway where it makes it reasonable to, you know, build a bridge across, you're almost up to Stern School to the north, and you're almost down to Washington Street to the south, where we have existing pedestrian facilities. There, I have seen, you know, stoplights on the ramps for pedestrian crosswalks, things like that. Based upon the speed and the volume of traffic that we have entering and exiting the, the highway there, I would not advise that. So that's kind of where we are at this point.
Yeah, I see that. I just saw it down in Schaumburg off of Roselle. They put one over the tollway. It's huge, and I realized it's probably a huge expense. I mean, as much as building a roadway over there, because it's long, and it has to take off a lot sooner to get over the, the entry lanes onto the toll road, so, yeah. But the bike path on Grand Avenue, we're cut in half between the east and the west. There's really no great way. Are they redoing Stern School Road again?
Yes.
Did I hear that? Yeah.
Yes, the village is participating in the, the pedestrian facilities up there. We're actually going to be adding a sidewalk on the south side of the bridge.
Oh, great.
Or south side of the roadway across the tollway in addition to the bike path on the north side.
Great. That's, that's.
And you can get, you can get from here almost all the way to Hunt Club Road along Washington.
Yes. The county is planning on rebuilding the intersection of Hunt Club and Washington 2022. As part of that, we've been working with them to work on some pedestrian facilities. The gap that's there right now from Dax Tax up to the intersection of Hunt Club will be filled in and completed. In addition, we're going to be running sidewalk facilities to the south to join up with the sidewalk that we installed last year that ended at, it's the, the first entrance in, I think it's Wildflower, first entrance into South Ridge. And then going to the north, we're going to get all the way up to the Park District Community or the Hunt Club Park. So we'll get a significant amount of sidewalk and pedestrian facilities outside of the limits of the actual roadway construction, but they're willing to go ahead and make those logical connections for us.
Great. 2022 on the bike path?
2022 on the bike path, yes.
Awesome. Great.
Any other thoughts, comments? Josh or Dave? So next steps is, what's that? Oh, okay. Does anybody want to make a comment about anything that they've heard? Okay. It wasn't a public hearing, so I didn't.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
For, for the staff and, and thank you for the presentation. But what specifically should we be looking for as we go into a deeper dive? We heard your overview. Is there something specific that, you know, the staff or you as a consultant that you've seen the boards, the planning and zoning boards comment on to give feedback before it goes in front of the trustees and the mayor? And I'm just wondering, what, what should our job be as a board, and what feedback are you looking for?
From our perspective, as, you know, the planning and zoning board, you're very intimately familiar with the workings of the village and the development and redevelopment scenarios that you see. So, you know, we, we've tried to provide as much detail as we can, but we think there may be some things in here that you could either provide us a little bit more detail or that you want us to mention, or a policy perhaps that you think is important and would be helpful to you when you're making decisions that you can lean back on it and say, see, this policy, this is the, this is the position that we're falling back on, and this is why this works or this doesn't work. So it's really just looking at it, I guess, the, the way to put it, the kind of shorthand version, to see what we missed. And so that we can add that and make sure that this document kind of really works for what you need it to moving into the future.
Okay.
So as, as you go through the document over the next several weeks or whatever, if you have any feedback, just reach out to Clara or Tracy and, and let them know. As I understand, the next step would be to filter through that input, and then we'll have a formal public hearing to present to the general public and then make a recommendation to the village board. So can you guys address what the timeline is for that?
Well, bef, before I address the timeline, one of the things that I would take a look at is I would ask you to take a look at that exhibit that Jim had mentioned. I mean, some of those land use changes that are on that map. Just go through those, look at that, make sure that those, in your mind, make sense based upon the goals, objectives that we've noted in here. I know we had some discussion at some previous meetings about specific parcels. And some of those, you know, for instance, the parcel that's in Northridge Plaza, the commercial, big vacant, commercial parcel that's in the middle, there was a lot of discussion about whether that should, you know, be reflected on the comp plan as residential, or should it remain as commercial, those kinds of things, so.
And, and on that particular one, my read is that there's no change being proposed there right now, correct?
No, I think where we are.
I didn't see the dotted lines there.
Changing it. It's being changed to residential, proposed.
Oh, it didn't have that.
And that is, those are the kinds of things that I think that, you know, definitely take a look through and, and see if you concur, because I know we had a lot of discussion about some of those parcels.
And, and what we'll do, just to help out, when I get back to the office tomorrow, we'll send you the existing future and areas of change map separately as PDF, so they'll be bigger size.
Okay.
So you can just pull them up on your screen and zoom in on areas, because I know it's probably more difficult in the document, but I'll make sure I get those to you in the morning.
And then we can email those to you, so you can pull them up and actually focus in on those. As for the timeframe, kind of really depends upon, you know, when you guys can get a deeper dive into this, get comments back to us, what Arista's schedule is looking like. I know some of us are, either have weddings, kids' weddings, or trips planned, so, you know, we're probably looking at at least a couple of months out.
I would say, yeah, I mean, the comments will filter to you. You guys will take a look. We'll have a conversation, and either I'll come out or we can do it over the phone. We'll make the revisions. And then typically, if nothing's radically changing, like if it isn't like a whole upheaval, we can usually turn that around within a couple of weeks. And then we like to generally release documents for at least like a week, a week, or a week and a half to two weeks, so that the public, if they're interested, can read it. And then we'd be back. So, I mean, we can work as efficiently as we, as we can with everyone to, to kind of keep the process moving.
Okay.
Okay. I missed the one about the, is it Northridge?
Northridge, yeah.
Because I'm not seeing the dotted lines there. We, we, we talked about that one at length during the last time.
We never really came to a consensus, so that, you know.
How do you all feel about changing that to residential?
I missed that one, too.
Is that the one where the Jewel Lhaska was going to go in?
No, the Olive Garden parcel.
No.
Oh.
Right, where that ring road is, that it has outlets with the restaurants on it. Okay. It's that center part. The center part they want to make into residential? There's a big for sale sign that says, you know, 9.9 acres. Ah, okay.
So that parcel's been vacant, you know, it's been zoned commercial for 22, 23 years now. It's been sitting vacant, you know, they've struggled to market it. And we have someone actively looking at it for a commercial use right now, so.
For a what?
For a commercial use.
Okay.
It's.
I, I'm not a big fan of putting residential there. To me, it doesn't seem a quality.
I agree, they're of open space.
Well, yeah.
With the trees on there.
Yeah, but, so I.
I have a quick question. I just, I was driving by there the other day. Why are all those trees in straight lines? Why did they plant that like that?
They were planted there so they could get an agricultural exemption on their property taxes.
Would've thought it would've been a little more random. It looks like an orchard planted or something, but, yeah.
That's your ag.
What's that?
That's your ag designation, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, but how do you guys feel about that being residential instead of a commercial?
Me? No.
So I think, I think we're kind of consistent on that one from last time, just based on the informal straw poll, so. The other one we talked about a lot last time was the Oak Plain Belvedere. And I didn't have my exhibit from last time, but it seemed like it was less dense than it was before.
Yes, it was significantly toned down.
Okay.
Also, you didn't have to drive through the industrial or the residential to get to the industrial.
Correct.
So you separated a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, because I think the feedback from last time was, at least in the exhibits in here, make it a lower density, because it's, it's easier to, to go up. Then if somebody comes in and proposes something dense, to pull it back, and then they'll say, well, that's what's in your document here.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think that makes it, I can't speak for the residents to the north, but, you know, when it was the proposed jewel, you know, years and years ago or whatever, you know, we had lots of issues with, you know, the residential area around there. So to see it dial back a little bit, at least as a move in the right direction, I still don't know what the temperature is in the neighborhood, you know, this many years removed from that old jewel pro, prospect. But, you know, this is quite a different sort of thing than, than back then, so. And I guess we would just have to see, you know, what would happen, project, I guess, but.
And, and just kind of going back to my comments from before, that parcel might be a good place to have a age and place community. So.
Is, I, I don't see that in here. Was it in the, was it in the?
Page forty-five.
On what?
Page forty-five.
Oh, okay, it's further back. Oh, there it is. Sorry. Okay, yeah. All right. Yeah, a lot less dense.
Yeah, I mean, I'm seeing more open space and a better traffic flow than, than last time. But, but like I said before, I mean, as much as we, the concept is more palatable now than it was before, the less dense we make it in this exhibit, I think, the more well we're served in the future.
Quick, quick question.
Yes.
Are there municipal boundary changes taking place as well?
There are none really, you know, that's, the village has the right to extraterritorially zone within a mile and a half of our current boundaries, if it's not across a boundary agreement, if it's not in another community. A lot of the areas outside of our boundaries are covered by sewer service area agreements. You know, we're pretty much locked in. We've got a little bit of land near Forty-Five and Grand that we can annex. Most of the rest of it is infill development. So we're not really expanding our borders a whole lot, other than that corner up in the northwest area of town.
Yeah, I just noticed on page twenty-four, where, where it says existing land use, there were a couple of pockets of. And I guess that's what you're talking about, the northeast, the, the north, these corners.
Well, 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 it's anywhere on the map, Josh. I mean, because like Dave mentioned, we can envision a mile and a half outside our border. So you'll see in our comprehensive plan that a what-if situation, if you will. But the actual zoning map only gets amended boundary-wise if there's an annexation of property. So we don't, we don't change the boundaries in, in the, in the comp plan.
Okay. It, it just looks like there's these white pockets on page twenty-four, and then they're filled in with the pink industrial zoned on, on page twenty-five, with, and it's blocked out. And I don't know if that's representing a change or a boundary line. It just makes it look, it just makes it look like the municipal boundary is changing.
And, and again, the comp plan is a guide for future development. So should we annex the property?
Okay.
What is an appropriate zoning classification? So it's kind of a plan out there for what we would be looking for. It's not actually changing the boundaries, but should somebody come to us with a petition to annex that property, this is kind of what we're looking for in terms of, that's an appropriate land use there, and it gets us to our goals and objectives in the comp plan.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, as we have additional thoughts, we'll channel them in and. Unless anyone has any other questions, I'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me sit as well.
Oh, no problem. I've been there before, I tell you. It's not, it's not fun. Next item is the informal review.
Mr. Ron Sacks is requesting informal review and feedback on a plan for a mixed-use development consisting of retail, self-storage, and residential on property generally located at the northwest corner of Washington Street and Cemetery Road. The subject properties at 16530 West Washington Street and 34644 North Cemetery Road consist of approximately 10 acres and are zoned E estate in unincorporated Lake County. The property is surrounded by residential, commercial, public, and industrial zoned properties in the village of Gurnee and estate zoned property in the county. The village's current comprehensive land use plan reflects office service for the 16530 West Washington Street property and low-density residential for the 34644 North Cemetery Road property. The draft comp plan reflects commercial for the 16530 West Washington Street property and medium-density residential for the 34644 North Cemetery Road property. The applicant is in attendance to present the proposal.
Okay, thank you, Clara. And just to remind everybody, this is informal in that, you know, we're not taking any action or voting on anything this evening. And, you know, nothing is a formal commitment by either us or, or members of the, of the party that's seeking feedback.
Can everybody, do you have, do you all have the package?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe this, I don't know how far this will be.
As a matter of fact, those are the two pages I'm on right now.
Okay, good.
So on the map, this would be the north edge, Cemetery Road, running north and south, Washington running east and west. The proposal is to, as you mentioned, take the property, which is mixed-use currently, farm and, and convert it to a mixed-use, which would be storage and retail center on the south edge of the property. We currently own a piece of property about two miles directly west of there, which is a residential, or I'm sorry, a commercial center. And then we're also, excuse me, developing a piece of property in Beach Park for the storage. So it's kind of a combination of both of those. We don't have the exact square footage, but the storage, as shown, would probably be somewhere in the 75,000 to 100,000 square feet of storage. The retail center we're proposing is in the 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. And the whole point, we're currently in the building on Washington Street and Old Walnut Circle. We have owner-occupied space of about 5,000 square feet. We've outgrown the, the location, so we're looking at moving from where we are into the retail center and then subsidizing it by the storage facility on the back, call it the edge of the property. on the back, call it the edge of the property. And if there's some questions regarding kind of the drawings or the zoning.
Anybody have any questions, comments, opinions? Dave?
Yeah, I, I think there's definitely some challenges because of, particularly of the Cemetery Road parcel and how narrow it is. And I, I'm not initially a hundred percent convinced that we're comfortable, I guess, with the use, given all the relatively low-density residential that's already present in the area. And I guess, you know, when I look at self-storage, I, I see quite a range of different kind of activities that end up taking place in self-storage. And some of it, I get concerned on its potential appropriateness relative to the neighborhood. And, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of these self-storage end up being, you know, an extension of someone's business, you know, and ends up being a remote shop or, you know, and things like that. So there can end up being some activities that take place that I don't necessarily know that lend themselves well as being a good neighbor to a, to a residential area in such close proximity. So the alternative is to try to say, well, okay, Dave, well, if you're not going to put something like self-storage on it, what else is appropriate? And I, and again, I said the challenge is because of its shape, you know, to try to say, okay, you know, figure out how you're going to, you know, fully develop that from a residential standpoint presents you some different challenges, too. So I'm not going to try to necessarily solve the problem. I just wanted to share some of my initial concerns about the potential activities that could take place within self-storage relative to the neighborhood. So I don't really have any issues whatsoever with the retail component down on that corner, Cemetery and Washington. I think it's completely appropriate. My concern is basically with the back section.
Well, and, and speaking on, as far as the development, to, to do anything other, I mean, it's kind of like the best use, to take and develop any type of retail use along the rest of that property because of the shape and the access that you have to the other roads is pretty limited. It's more to subsidize, I mean, we currently don't own the property, so we're looking at, you know, possible use. But to take anything other than, you know, light industrial use, if you will, but, I mean, that property's been there for how many years? And it's been, I don't say on the market, but it's been, in a sense, you know, known to be for sale, and there's nobody there that's going to be building homes. I mean, that could have been done years ago when that small neighborhood was, was built. So I don't know, are, were you saying that your concern is, is that there isn't residential, enough residential, or there's, or because of the residential in that area?
Well, I guess, you, the shape and orientation of the parcel is unfortunately limiting.
Right.
It's existing classification as a residential parcel. You know, I, I guess my point is, A, I think it's still appropriate that that area be residential relative to what's around it. So to change that designation and make it more of a light, commercial slash light industrial, whatever the self-storage is categorized, I, I question its appropriateness. But the challenge is, okay, fine, if we're going to leave it residential, how do you take that sliver and properly development as a residential use? That's, I mean, I'm just stating maybe the obvious to everybody here, but it's really challenging to maintain it. I, I was probably a little bit more in favor of taking the far western end of it and trying to make residential out of it as a bit of a compromise to it. But just in general, I guess, having, having the, the storage as an immediate neighbor to such a low-density residential, I just wasn't so much in favor of that, just conceptually, I guess.
Well, one of, one of the attachments that you do have is on the western portion of that property, there is in that packet, I guess, a pass-through, because I guess ultimately the village would like to see, because the properties that go north from the, that line are all lined up, deep, long lots. So I guess the thought might be someday to, a developer to acquire those lots and maybe develop, so you'd have a, in a sense, a pass-through with homes on either side, and then this portion be the storage. But, I mean, you still have the challenge all along Cemetery Road where you have these lots that are probably four, five hundred feet deep and maybe a hundred and fifty feet wide. To, to try to have someone acquire all of those and get those developed and the home is also, you know, probably a, more of a long-term challenge than anything else.
Yeah, and this has been a, a challenge for us, you know, for, for quite a while here in Gurnee, as, as the infill development phase of our.
Yeah, and Dave.
Of our, of our life cycle as a, as a village takes place. It's like we, you know, I remember when we were talking about developing that Bobby's Corner, you know, people wanted to carve it off and, and take chunks out of it and whatever. We're like, no, no, no. We, we really, whenever possible, wanted to keep a comprehensive view, you know, and back out and say, how do we want to see a corridor develop versus these little spot hopscotch developments? Because you can't undo it once you say, okay, let's change it and go a different direction, you know?
One, one of the other features in, in the presentation, I'm sorry, were you about to say something?
No, go ahead.
Okay. One of the other features, you talked about in that immediate area, the, the memory care, the, you know, the long-term care homes, the retirement communities. There's several along that Hunt Club Road. And, I mean, not all of them, but a majority of them are always looking for that type of storage, you know, for, so I do hear what you're saying as far as the risk of businesses and so forth being, you know, run out of that and the risk of the people that are associated with that. But the, when we looked at this and talked to people about the feasibility of it, a majority of the so-called customers would be coming from those, not only the homes, but also from the assisted living facilities.
Yeah, can you use the microphone, please?
The, the main intent of this is to expand my business that I have in Lake County right now. So with that and the fact that we have been in the storage business, we've already gone through the zoning portion of it where it, it is adjacent to other residential homes in Beach Park. We have limitations of height limitations, what we can store, and what the building's going to look like. So we would make it work well with the retail center and then build these in phases. The other option, what Ron told you, was just to kind of change these, this lot into residential. So then there's a continuation into this property if it starts, you know, if there's opportunity to start selling those other pieces off. So, I mean, we're just looking at buying it. We didn't even, it was an idea, and before we do anything, we wanted to see what the, the, if there's any opportunity for it. Because right now, it's Lake County. And if you look at it, there's like the carnivals are parked back there. There's a lot of storage already. There's boat storage. There's, it's, I, I think what I'm proposing to do is just going to make it more, it's going to enhance it. There's residential people living along it, and it's all storage right now with Lake County. And it's all outdoor storage. The carnival people are there, the businesses. And I, and I think if you're really concerned about the homeowners with the restrictions of how we're proposing it and how we're, how the, how it's supposed to look, I think the homeowners would probably prefer that. That's just my opinion on it. And if you see the businesses, the sketch of what we've already currently built, it works well with the, the residential area. I mean, the one we have in Lake County, we had to go through the, all the residential. We went through zoning. We had to make sure our building worked well with the, the homes that are around it. So I think he has pictures of what the current store.
........................
Our business has grown so much that I'm looking to expand it. And then we've had a lot of luck with, I mean, it's been great having the retail coming in. So with that happening, I felt that this would be a good piece of land for us to incorporate more warehouse space for my business, or our business. But we were just looking at it to keep it in Gurnee area. But we've been through this before with the zoning. So that's why we're here, just to make sure that there is possible opportunity for it before we decide to move forward. Because I know at one time, they wanted assisted living there, I think. Right?
No.
Yeah.
But nothing's ever been presented to us.
No.
Edwin?
So is that property, that L shape, under ownership by one owner right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Two parcels, but it's one owner.
Two parcels, one owner. He doesn't own anything to the north of that, then?
No.
Okay. Got it.
And I think with the sewage, because I, I don't know if you need water and sewage for storage necessarily. I think I would need it for the retail. But then we could put holding, a holding tank on there, right? Isn't that a septic hold? Where's the water?
Water is available. We've got lots of water right across the street.
But the, it's a.
Sewer.
Sewer.
Is a little bit trickier, but it could come out of the residential subdivision.
Brad?
You know, at first, I was not an advocate of the self-storage being immediately adjacent to the residential. But, you know, now that I think, I drive by here all the time, and she's absolutely right. There's just stuff stored all over that parcel.
There's tractors, there's carnival equipment.
Guy rents it out, store your boat here, store your RV, you know, whatever.
Right.
Gurnee would have more control if we annexed it in, and we would be able to work with the boundaries of, you know, the height restriction. We went through all this in Beach Park, where there was, we couldn't do any outdoor storage. There was a limitation of height. There's a certain height restriction for the fence landscaping. I think that it's just going to enhance the, the neighborhood, especially if, you know, if it's an option that you would work with. I mean, ideally, we'd like the whole thing. But I, I think it's a compromise in order to open this up, have four homes there, and then keep the road. So you still can, am I doing this right? Yeah, right?
Yeah, the, the homes would be here.
And then it would continue on over there.
Right now, that road is basically at that end, as it sits.
It's stubbed. It's stubbed there to the north in order for us to extend it for residential. And what I wanted to say earlier is that, Dave, you're right, that it's difficult to develop that kind of leg piece there by itself, but that's why properties are assembled together. And just keep in mind that just because we can't envision how it can be or developed as residential, there are ways. Cul-de-sacs can be sunk from the north once you assemble properties from the north. What you have to keep in mind is that if you do allow self-storage here, it's going to be sandwiched probably between residential to the south and residential to the north eventually. Versus if you kind of keep it there on the corner and, you know, not sandwiched north and south of that residential, it's a little different. So just keep that in mind. Is that still all Lake County right now, all that? Right now, yes.
I would just echo what, what Dave said, and that there is, there would be that sort of inconsistency in the zoning to the north and the south, just for that one, you know, stretch versus the corner lot. I don't, I don't see anything, any, I don't have any issues with the corner lot, I mean, the proposal.
For the, for the retail.
Right, right, for parcel A.
He's selling the whole thing. And so I would like to, you know, work the whole, you know.
We've asked that question.
Yes, I see.
It's hypo. How much he said, no. Because that's one of the things that we wanted, because in his vision, if he sells that corner lot, what's the value of that to him?
Or to anybody, really.
I'd have to buy.
Do you find it any more appetizing with the other drawing that shows the pass-through, which kind of alleviates then the sandwiching effect?
I'll weigh in here a little bit. I, also, I don't have any real issue with some sort of complementary retail that's complementary to the developments to the south of Washington Street. I, I don't have any problem with that at all. I, I'm looking at the exhibit that shows the, the punch out of Churchill Road, and there's like four houses shown there. And then there's a retention area to the east, and then there's three self-storage buildings. I, I could, you know, I, I have no trouble with the extension of the road, but I, I could see possibilities that those three self-storage buildings could be, could be houses. There's got, I think there's a way to do that. I kind of like what, what Brian's first reaction was. I, I don't think I'm a real fan of having self-storage be sandwiched into, to single-family homes. It, it just doesn't feel right to me. I, I view that as more of a transitional use between more of a, a commercial area and an industrial area, or maybe a, a high-density, well-screened, multifamily district. I, I just, I just don't, I don't feel good about that one. But some sort of retail on the, on the actual corners of Cemetery and Washington feels okay to me. Extending Churchill and coming up with some, some houses to the, to the north, that, I'm okay with that. I just, I just don't feel good about the self-storage.
Okay. I mean, this is just all what we're, we're willing, that's, it's helpful for us, because, you know, I'm, we're not going to purchase this if, if this is going to be an obstacle. Or the other option was to go through Lake County and then see what their zoning was going to say, because it's still Lake County property. And there, I don't know what their zoning is going to be, but we are the properties in, in Lake County. So.
I did, I just wanted, it was a point of clarification. When you say you could see those three storage units, are you talking about the last page of the packet?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This here?
I would fully agree with that.
Yeah, I can see some, there's a creative one to do some roadway to have.
I can see all of this being.
Yes.
That commercial use and stuff. I could totally get it, because it, it fits in with kind of the look and feel of an extended, you know.
Right.
Use here. But then this would kind of flow into more residential use.
Well, I don't even know if you can take Churchill and you can.
Right.
You can split it off.
Okay.
And then bulb it off to the right.
Yeah, I mean.
To the east. I mean, I, again, I, I don't have a point of perspective and scale necessarily based on the drawing. But, you know, if you basically struck a line from the.
Just, just to give you a perspective, like you're talking about is, you know, the homes here are splitting this up here. This area here is not wide enough to have a road and then housing on either side.
You could, you could sink a cul-de-sac in from the north.
But it is wide enough to have a road with houses just on one side.
Yeah.
So.
And be, I, I.
Yeah.
Or mildly.
All right. Anything else?
We lay out.
Which are pretty much all of those parcels along.
We do these informals a lot.
Uh-huh.
And this is consistent with, with how we deal with just the separation.
No, it's helpful, yeah.
Yeah. Now, if you could bundle the next parcel to the north and come up with something.
Yeah, I mean, what he wants for that property, there's, I mean, it's, you, you've just got to be able to utilize it and, and make it worth with the, the land use.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, opinions?
I, I would just.
Yes.
Agree with David that, that road is a little narrow. Also, you've got a really nice bike path that all that traffic has to cross to get in and out of the, the self-storage, too. So I, I do agree that that corner would be fine for, for.
Retail?
Retail. But I don't like the self-storage in between either.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's my agenda. Are we going to have a meeting on the fourth?
Uh, yes, we will.
We'll have a meeting, okay.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Open the floor to the public, close the floor to the public. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.